Welcome to the September 14, 2017 Business Meeting. And I'm going to turn this over to our County Minister, Don Crupp, for a roll call.
Yes, good morning Commissioners. We are joined this morning with Mr. Chris Story, representing County Council, and our Clerk for the Board, Mary Rathke. I will start with a roll. Commissioner Schrader?
Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Here.
Chair Bernard?
Here. Two of our Commissioners are in Washington DC bringing back the money you sent in your taxes. I'm sure bags of it.
Yeah.
So we look forward to their return. Our first presentation is a pro- well, actually.
Flag salute.
Oh, flag salute. Excuse me. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I thought we did that yesterday.
We did.
We did. Well, the first presentation is a proclamation on the new Roderndenren Footbridge to be dedicated to the community of Roderndenren, Hoodland area, and Mount Hood this weekend. I think it's Saturday, right?
That's correct.
And first off, we'll, we should probably make a motion. And after the motion, we have an individual, Steve Graeper, from that community who would like to speak. And then we'll read the proclamation.
Chair, I move we proclaim the new Roderndenren Footbridge to be dedicated to the communities of Roderndenren, the Hoodland area, and the Mount Hood territory.
There a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to proclaim the new Roderndenren Footbridge to be dedicated to the community of Roderndenren and Hoodland avenue, Hoodland area, and the Mount Hood territory. Any further discussion?
Well, one thing I was wondering was whether you would like to read the proclamation.
Yes, we're going to do that after the, after it's voted on.
Very good.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Mr. Graeper, would you be interested in reading the proclamation?
I'll leave it to you, sir.
Okay. So you have a few minutes.
Do I push anything here? Am I on? I'm on. All right. Thank you Commissioners and welcome back from your hiatus. I hope you had a marvelous two weeks off and got lots of personal stuff done and didn't even think about the county in your two weeks off. My name is Stephen Graeper and I am the Chair of the Roderndenren Community Planning Organization, and I am here today on half of the Roderndenren CPO and the Roadie Rising Subcommittee and all the citizens of the Roderndenren and Hoodland area. And I want to publicly thank the Department of Transportation, or the Department of Transportation and Development, and the great men and women of the Roads and Bridges Division, who, under the direction of Doug McLean, had his crew completely rebuild our iconic Roderndenren Swinging Bridge. I also want to thank the Commissioners for considering the proclamation and voting on it in favor today. And I hereby formally invite all of the Clackamas County Commissioners and staff and any interested citizens to attend the celebration and dedication of the Roderndenren Swinging Bridge this Saturday, September 16th, at 4:00 PM. We will have refreshments, which always brings people out, so, and we will also have a time for a formal reading of the proclamation. And Chair Bernard, if you could read the proclamation formally into the record, I would appreciate it, and I thank you very much for your time.
Great. And our Commissioners in Washington DC will be flying in specifically for this event.
That's great.
Proclaiming the new Roderndenren Footbridge to be dedicated to the community of Roderndenren and Hoodland area and the Mount Hood territory. Whereas the community of Roderndenren falls within the jurisdiction of Clackamas County, and whereas a portion of the old Mount Hood Loop Highway and the historic Barlow Road runs through the community of Roderndenren, and whereas after the historic Christmas flood of 1964, Clackamas County Bridge workers designed and constructed a replacement pedestrian bridge across the Zig Zag River in Roderndenren along the right of way of the old Mount Hood Loop Highway. And whereas in 2017, the Clackamas County Bridge crew rebuilt and refabricated almost every portion of the pedestrian bridge to strengthen its structural integrity and allow it to remain a safe, attractive, and significant landmark in the Roderndenren community. And whereas the community of Roderndenren wishes to recognize the importance of this bridge as a symbol of its resolve to remain connected. And whereas the bridge unites and brings together the community both literally and figuratively, and whereas this bridge will be celebrated by the community at a ceremony planned for 4:00 PM Saturday, September 16, 2017. Now therefore, it is hereby proclaimed that the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners dedicate the Roderndenren Footbridge over the Zig Zag River to the residents of Mount Hood Territory, the Hoodland area, and the Roderndenren community dated this day, September 14, 2017. Congratulations, and we'll see you up Saturday.
Thank you very much. We'll see you Saturday.
Thanks. The next item on the agenda?
Yes, we have another presentation. September is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and we have a presentation for you about this. I'm going to invite Mary Rumba and Galley Murray up to the dais to share this presentation
Morning, thank you.
Good morning, Chair Bernard Commissioners. Thank you so much for taking the time this morning to hear about the work that we're doing here in both the division and our department. My name is Mary Rumba, and I am the Director of the Behavioral Health Division, a Division of Health, Housing, and Human Services. It is my honor to introduce Galley Murray, who is leading our work for suicide prevention, both in our division as well as our department and into this community. So we're hoping to share the work that we're currently doing around suicide prevention, give you some statistics, so that you guys can better understand and support the work that we're doing here in this community. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good morning, Administrator Crupp, Chair Bernard, Commissioners. Good to see you all again. Thanks for having us here. As Mary mentioned, September is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, so I'm here again before you to talk a bit about the prevalence of suicide on a national, state, and local level, and talk just a bit about what we're doing within H3S. So again, I'm Galley Murray. I'm the Suicide Prevention Coordinator within Behavioral Health in H3S. So something amazing is happening here in Clackamas County, and we're definitely starting the conversation, and we're being very intentional about the work of suicide prevention, and without a doubt, we are making a difference. Director Swift, Director of H3S in, here in Clackamas County, has set out several bold and very visionary initiatives. And those are to break down mental health stigma by changing the workplace culture within H3S, and those are to also promote suicide prevention, and most importantly, to empower us, H3S employees. In May of 2016, he committed to training all of us, all 586 H3S staff, in mental health first aid. And more than 530 of us, H3S employees, are now mental health first aid certified. It's a huge accomplishment. Attempting to reduce suicides for people in our care to zero may seem absolutely scary or even impossible, but what other number should we strive for? And I know the three of you here have heard me speak about this before, and I would ask, what number, what number's acceptable as far as deaths by suicide here in our county? And we have agreed within H3S that zero is the only acceptable number. And one of the ways that we have agreed to do that is to be intentional about the care that we are providing to those people we serve in our department. And how that has looked is that H3S has created zero suicide implementation teams at the division levels and at the department levels as a way to operationalize the work of providing what we refer to as suicide safer care. We've also determined that suicide prevention training is absolutely essential for all H3S staff, some form, some form of training. We've also been intentional about discovering where we, as a department, might be more intentional about decreasing, decreasing risk for suicide for those people we serve. And we've done that through inviting teams through the department to engage in the process mapping process. And lastly, we have been intentional about increasing the number of community members that are intentionally screened for risk of suicide by using a standardized screening tool for risk. And in some places, what this has looked like is that with every single person who walks in the door, every client gets screened for suicide risk. And that is actually happening right now within Behavioral Health at our urgent walk-in clinic at Riverstone. Every single person who walks to the door is asked about thoughts of suicide. Every single person. So despite these efforts, we still have a tremendous amount of work to do. And this slide speaks, speaks to that. So history has shown that action by organizations can eventually make huge, huge differences, life-saving differences, that initially may have seemed downright impossible. And you can see in the slide, and the three of you have seen this slide before, you know, for things like stroke, AIDS, heart disease, all of those rates have dropped, and dropped dramatically. And if you look at the rate of suicide, that hasn't happened yet. And if you look specifically at our national rate, that rate is not going down, that rate is going up. And there's no sign of that rate going down. So what are we talking about as far as the numbers, the facts? What do we know? So on a national level, we know that suicide is the 10th leading cause of death in the United States. And for every single death, we know that 25 suicide attempts occur. We know that the annual adjusted rate, the age adjusted rate, is 13.26 per 100,000 individuals, and that rate continues to go up. We know that men die by suicide three and a half times more likely than women. And we know that guns, firearms account for almost 50% of the deaths by suicide. In Oregon, in our state, we have had a higher rate of suicide than the national average for the past three decades. Most people don't know that. It has nothing to do with the weather, despite the myths. Suicide is the second leading cause of death among Oregonians ages 15 to 34 years of age, and the eighth leading cause of death among everyone in this state. And consistent with the national data, death by firearm accounts for more than 50% of the deaths involving, deaths by suicide. They include a gun. Locally, in our county, in Clackamas County, as of 2015, unfortunately, we have moved into the number one rate of suicide compared to our counterparts in Washington and Multnomah Counties. Clackamas County now sits at a 17.4 age adjusted rate compared to our counterparts in the tri-county region. That is a new statistic. As of 2015, our rate is, is higher, by 16% higher than the national rate of suicide, our county rate of suicide. We lose one community member every five days, averaging about 62, 62 deaths a year to suicide. And consistent with both national and state data, the amount of people who are dying by suicide using a gun in our county is over half. And to speak to that, this slide, which you can probably see better in your packet than the screen, thanks to the, the blue that's on here, this slide is specific to 2015, 2016. It speaks to the disproportionate rate of people who die by suicide using a gun. And I would say that this begs the question, why we, as a larger community and as systems, are not having more intentional conversation about reducing access to lethal means? By putting time and place between someone and a gun who is distressed can actually save a life. So we have agreed that zero deaths to suicide is the only acceptable number. And as I've mentioned, you know, attempting to reduce suicides for people in our care within H3S, it may seem absolutely absurd. It may seem scary. It may seem completely impossible. But I would ask, and I've asked you this before, last year when I was in front of you, what is an acceptable number? Is five an acceptable number? No. I mean, all of us can agree that, that zero is the only acceptable number. One death is too many. 62 is downright unacceptable. And so this quote, I like to read this quote because it resonates with me, and it really fuels the work I do in suicide prevention, around the work that we do in the department and the people who we support, that it's absolutely critically important to design for zero, even when it may not be theoretically possible. And it's about purposely aiming for a higher level of performance. That if we aim for zero, we will perform to zero. If we aim for five, we will perform to five. And we're aiming for zero. And lastly, you know, I've spoken about how we are being intentional about the work of suicide prevention within Behavioral Health, within the larger department. There are a lot of things happening that is changing the culture of what we do. And one of the things that we are doing to be very intentional is we are going to join in our community, for the first time ever, actually, in the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, is having their annual Out of the Darkness Community Walk. It's on October 7th, that's a Saturday. Starts down on the, you know, the East Esplanade in Portland. It's 3.4 miles. And we are, we have a Clackamas County team for the first time ever, and we are going to come out in force. And it's not about fundraising. I mean, this is a fundraiser, but for us, this is about creating awareness. And I would absolutely love for, for all of you to dawn your, your running shoes or your walking shoes, and, and join me and lots of other folks from the department, and come out and create awareness for suicide prevention on October 7th, on Saturday. Thank you very much. And there's a flyer here too, which is a, there's a direct link to joining our team. And again, please, you know, pass this on to family, friends, community partners. This is going to go far and wide. We just want to create awareness. So thank you for the time. Any questions or comments about what you've seen or heard today?
Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, so I, the numbers about the county not voting so well in these things, not favorably, have, begs the question, have we, anyone really engaged in a study and looking at people who have committed suicide as to maybe reasons why they have? And is there any parallels or any, many patterns, trends in that? Is it economics? Is, you know, is it a medical issue?
That is a wonderful question, and I love that you're posing that question. So what we know about suicide, the quick answer is no.
No, there's no studies?
There, there are lots of studies, but to really drill down on one particular reason, there isn't any one particular reason. There are, suicide is typically a, a lot of variables that come together for an individual, a lot of risk factors that come together. We know that, you know, for somebody who experiences depression, we know that that is a huge risk factor for suicide. We know that someone who is experiencing poverty, that's a risk factor for suicide. But each of those in isolation does not make someone at risk for suicide. All of those things combined make someone at risk for suicide. So you could have someone who's experiencing depression, and they may never think about suicide, but they might. So what we do in the world of suicide prevention is we look at individuals and their, their, where they move and how they move in the world, and what the protective factors are for those individuals, and what the risk factors are for those individuals. And what we're doing in H3S is we're trying, we're trying to increase those protective factors, and we're trying to mitigate those risk factors. So if someone is living in rural county and doesn't have as much access to resources, as many access, what can we do as a department to get those resources to those folks? So that's a long answer to your question, but there are studies, but there isn't any one particular reason why people die.
I know that people want to draw conclusions. This is natural.
Absolutely. And you and I both have the same question.
Or it's this, or it's that.
Absolutely.
I really appreciate your response to my question, but I would be interested in looking at the studies. And I do know that we've seen a sharp increase in poverty and, and those in homelessness. So I, if, I'm not saying in and of itself, like you said, that, that's a cause, but I, the fact that it spiked like it has, and we are, our numbers are, what, 17% higher than national average and not higher in the region, that's, that's curious to me.
No, and I, and I appreciate you, you saying that, because you know, one of the things that I, I wish that we lived in a world where, I mean, what I, I, I drive and I commute into work, and I drive in and I see billboards for, you know, let's beat cancer, let's talk about this, let's do that. But like, where are the signs talking about suicide and decreasing suicide? It is the second leading cause of death for actually 10 to 24 and 35-year-olds. So it's, it's killing our kids, our youth, at the second leading, second leading cause of death, second to car crashes. But yet you never see signs. You never know, you never hear about this, but we see signs about cancer and heart disease and stroke. Where are the signs about suicide prevention? Where are the signs about increasing awareness?
How do you prevent it?
Well, we talk about it. We have, we do this. You know, we, we create those, we create those conversations, and we start those conversations, and we make people feel like they're not alone. One in four of us experience a mental health issue in our lifetime. One in four either will or do. So that's me, that might be you, that might be our colleagues, my boss, my director. One in four, it doesn't discriminate. And if someone is experiencing a mental health issue, they are at risk, they could be at risk for suicide. So just by talking about it creates the space that, that I'm not alone, you're not alone, that other people experience the same thing. Any other questions or comments?
I've known a couple people who committed suicide, and the first thing you hear is that no one had any idea. And, you know, the stigma of talking to your, even your spouse, your person really close to you, you don't talk to them, and next thing you know, they're gone. And it's really tough. And, and I know that, I believe that there are more youth that are committing suicide now than there used to be. Is that also true?
You know, that's, that's a, that's a great question too, and that's not necessarily true. I think that we're just hearing about it more. We have a number of folks that are dying at disproportionate rates, you know, youth being one, our older adults being another, white men over the age of 45 are actually dying at higher rates than our youth right now. And again, nothing that, you know, nobody knows that, because we're not talking about it. But you know, we have a, we have a number of, of folks that are vulnerable that are dying in disproportionate ways in comparison to, to other folks. And we serve those people. You know, we, we as a county serve those people because people within H3S are knocking on our door because they're needing services, they're needing support. We're serving the most vulnerable folks. And so we have this unique opportunity to do care in a very different way, which is this whole effort around providing suicide safer care is to do it differently and to do it with intention.
Yeah, for, as the mayor of a community at one point, you know, we were always concerned that a lot of people use police officers to commit suicide. So, you know, and I've, you hear a lot about people driving down the road and decide to end their life and take other people's lives. But no one, you almost always consistently hear they had no idea. But there's got, and I took the, the class.
Mental health first aid?
Yes.
Thank you, Chair.
Mental health first aid. And I think it does make you more aware and, and your responsibilities, should you see that, a mental health issue. But the other thing is that my doctor, who I go to consistently because she makes me, now you have to fill out a form each time you go, which was something that was brand new this last time. So in the last six months, you have to fill out a form, which, which they said, we have a new form you have to fill out. Anyway, so, yeah, I, I would say the medical community is more aware in asking the question. Whether people fill it out, you know, correctly, I guess that's yet to be seen.
Right.
Did you want to add anything?
No. No. And thank you for sharing your experience. I think, you know, one of the things about suicide is that it doesn't discriminate. You know, that we've all, we've all been touched by suicide in some way, whether it's personally or professionally. And, and that's the thing about suicide, is it doesn't matter. You know, it doesn't matter who we are, where we work, what our economic status is, it just doesn't matter. It has impacted all of us in one way or another. And then the work that we're doing is, is making a difference in creating awareness around that. So thank you for the time and being in front of you. And I would love an opportunity to talk more about how we're going to get that rate down, because that rate isn't going, you know, it's not going to go down, just like stroke and heart disease and AIDS. Those rates didn't go down on their own. They went down because of intentional strategic work to drive those rates down. We have to be intentional about it. We're going to get it down. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. Next up is a citizen communication, and we have Les Poole and Carl Pfeiffer. Please come up and introduce yourself and.
Thank you.
Is Carl still here?
Yeah.
Come on up. Les will be up first, but you can wait for him. Go ahead, Les.
Good morning, Les Poole, Gladstone. You've got an interesting job. We go from celebrating the bridge at Roderndenren to discussing tragic suicides, and none of the less comes up and brings up the roads. I heard some interesting numbers there, and the, the men's death rate, three times was the number. If you put that in a percentage and put it in a newspaper, the number 300% comes up, and people get a bigger picture of, of why that's happening. I did not hear the word veterans in the entire presentation, and that's not intended to critique or, or diminish anything that we just heard, but the word veterans is in that equation deeply, and we all know that. And I appreciate what the county's done up till now. I attended the recent ODOT meeting that Paul arranged at Camp Withacomet. I'm sure we'll hear about that. And that's regarding the second phase of the Sunrise Corridor. It would be great if someday we had a projector or a way for folks to bring in a map of the property in question, or, you know, if there's something they want to share, they don't have to hold it up like this. But this is Phase 1. I think everyone that uses that Sunrise Corridor is very pleased, especially Fred Myers and, and the folks that are creating really good jobs for us. I invited the production, I mean, the transportation manager to be there, and he had a chance to interact with Paul. And I just appreciate that happening. We've got it, we've got to get that project moving forward, and it's going to take a long time. And, and that phase is, is east on 212 to get past the bottleneck at 224. I understand more and more folks are traveling out 212 at 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock in the afternoon and getting nowhere. So I look forward to more follow-up on that project, and I'll help any way I can.
Yeah, we're going to have a policy session here soon, because we have new Commissioners that don't know anything about the project. And it's been a while for me too, so we will be having, there will be a big map up on the wall.
Awesome. The other thing I was going to mention is I'd like to thank the firefighters. I have a family and property up in the gorge. My property's been saved before. It's not involved in this, this tragic avoidable inferno. Ironically, I have relatives across the river, and as I was watching TV, I saw this big fire develop in the background. And as the woman was reporting it, it was 11 o'clock at night. I kept telling myself, wait a minute, that's across the river. I'm, you know, and I convinced myself that I was making it all up. And of course, when I got up in the morning, there was my cousin from Skamania evacuating, and indeed, that thing had jumped the river. So I just, I just hope that everyone shows some, the incredible appreciation we need to show them. And I would conclude with, with a little light note, but a serious note. I'm so pleased that the fairgrounds has been available for, for bringing in livestock from Hood River County. They're using it down there. They're using the fairgrounds for kind of an emergency management purpose, and I just think it's great. And I wore my, my fair shirt today to honor that. Thank you all.
Thank you. Carl?
Hi. I'd like to thank you all for inviting me to the meeting today. I got this in the mail, and Jim, you signed it. And I, I'm here actually to talk to the sewer extension or annexation of a nine-lot subdivision, which is the handout that you guys, you folks sent out to me. And I'm the property right above that, the 10 acres, and above that is Pfeiffer Park. And I want you folks to know that we personally contribute, contributed hundreds of thousands of dollars to that project, hence. of dollars to that project, hence Pfeiffer Park. So I'm I'm here to put a face on sewer annexation and those sorts of developments. And if you look around this map here, basically what you see is all the developments that's happened over years, over years. And normally, as development occurs, services and sewer are brought along with it. And quite frankly, I don't know exactly what's going on with this particular section, but I'm in adjacent property. I've not heard anything about access for my property. There's an easement that runs along our property also that I have six hundred feet on, all the development took place and I I was not involved and development occurred. So I'm saying that to say, to say this. Our property was a significant, a significant part of the master plan for the county of Clackamas, okay? And I I'd like to give you a little bit of history and as all this development happened, thirty-some years have passed by. You see the color of my hair? I was thirty years old when all this started and my wife's family owned forty acres on Sunnyside Road. And as that developed, it all took place and we're still there. And I, one of the things that really troubles me is I got three minutes to talk about my life, our life, okay? And essentially what happened is as the as the it hit the the master plan developed in nineteen eighty, the Clackamas County designated the five acres above our ten acres as a park. We were, we were a bit concerned about that because we didn't know what to do about it. And as the development occurred, they made it, they actually made an offer to buy the property, okay? And I know this is out of sync here, but basically what we did is we turned it down. And in nineteen ninety-three, what happened was the the Sunnyside Neo Traditional Village came along. And I wrote a letter, I was at the meetings and I've got a letter signed here by Darlene Houli and different individuals. I think Linquist was the one of the others, but basically telling me that our concerns would be addressed, transportation services, everything's, everything's gone. And I heard Kenimer, Bill Kenimer, he was chairman at the time, saying that the Sunnyside Neo Traditional Village was a dream, didn't work out so well. And he talked about unintended consequences and the things that happened with the village. You know what? Pretty much everything went and developed, but we're still there. We're still there. And we don't have sewer, we do not have sewer. I talked at length with Clackamas County Sewer District, great guy, great guy, and tried to resolve the conflict because in order for the park to happen, there had to be an annexation, just like you folks are going to be doing later on today. There had to be a partition and there had to be a rezone. And we participated in that. And in order for the park to occur, that annexation had to take place. Well, the annexation took place and the partition took place, the rezone took place and at every step, the sewer district said that sewer could be provided and would be provided. And that was the condition of the use. And the park developed and when it came time for our piece of property to be developed, we all of a sudden had problems. We had problems to the tune of how 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 could we build a subdivision where sewer couldn't couldn't take place? And it's true because at the same time that the partitions and the rezone and the annexation were taking place, the county, the sewer, sewer district was designing the sewer for that. And there was an adjacent development, Pimento, Peanut Tinta, One and Two, Trickle Creek, Howard Estates, hundreds of lots developed. And yet the sewer was put in at an elevation that didn't serve our property, which was pivotal toward the development of the park. And at that time, when the park bought, when the Parks District bought that first five acres, they showed interest and said that eventually, once they got the funding, they would be back for the ten acres. Well, that never occurred, that never occurred. But the the caveat here is that as the five acre piece was developing, the Parks District and and the county were so interested in getting the park developed that they forgot about stormwater, the stormwater system. So they came back to us and once again, we went through all those approvals, the annexation, the rezone, conditional use permit, and it all went through, sewer available, sewer will be provided. And so to kind of sum it up, I don't want to drag it out here, but I want to let you know that we finally got together with Clackamas County Sewer District and they said, yes, you can develop, but you have to put in a pump to our standards, our standards. That pump, that pump costs six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, according to D R Horton, who expressed interest in the property. And there's no way, there's no way that we can do that. And all the deals get killed along the way because they can't, they can't add an extra twenty-two thousand dollars to the development of a lot. You can't do that on a thirty-two lot subdivision. So so what I'd like to say is just a couple, just a couple more, I'll finish here. So basically what it boils down to is we we want, we want the county and the commissioner, the the sewer district and everybody part to participate in making this, creating this situation. We'd like the county and the sewer district to step up and help out. And we don't, we didn't, we can't get that assurance, that's why I'm here. The other thing is, I've got the letter, I've got the meeting letter when we, when we met with Dan Denzer and he talked about what we would do, what the plan was to take the ten acres. And I'm I'm more than happy to show that to you and basically say, that's an availability, too. I'd love to do that, I'd love to get back. And we will, we will again participate. We're ready to participate at that same level, hundreds of thousands of dollars to make it happen. And Dan also said if they, at that time, they were waiting for a bond, Metro wasn't included in the deal, apparently the bond didn't go. But Dan said, we'll, we'll figure out terms and we'll work a contract, we'll carry the paper or whatever it takes. All I'm trying to say is, we want to get on the same train. We've been there, I've got gray hair. My wife is at home on hospice. And I hope that at some point, we will be able to move on and I appreciate your time and I I I say everything I'm saying and with great respect, I don't mean, I I'm not trying to, you know, drop a bunch of bombs.
So I'd be happy to meet with you about this issue and it sounds, my guess is a lot of us would. Is this in Happy Valley?
It's right off at the end of one hundred and thirty-ninth, Summers Laneus was, in fact.
I think I knew your family, you probably used to work on your cars. The name's familiar. Be happy to take a look at it.
Okay.
So in this, it's so it's not been annexed in the city Happy Valley?
It's not in the city, there's, there's, there's development that occurred.
It's surrounded.
It's surrounded. The park is, in fact, North Clackamas Parks District, but there is a big rumble. And in fact, Happy Valley was involved in that process because right in two thousand and two, there was a lot of development and Happy Valley participated in the development of that park.
So I'm very confused, it'd be better if I met with you and we could talk one-on-one so I could get the history.
And I think that's.
Set something up.
I just want to say, I think that's key because you can tell us now, but we really need to be looking at it with maps in more detail. So I'd be glad to set something up.
I'd be happy to come out, visit the site to get an idea.
Absolutely, I'd like you to meet my wife and you know what? We may not enjoy all the blood, sweat and tears that was put in by our family, but hopefully my little grandson and the grandchildren on the way will will be able to to enjoy some of that. And I appreciate your time, I really do. And what I say, I say because it's not just, you know, the swipe of a pin and I know you folks deal with those unintended consequences, but we feel like we're camped out on the on the bullseye.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right.
Could I add something? You know, it would be great if we had a projector or a way where the person could lay a picture up here so everyone could see it.
We do, but I doubt that.
I'm just saying that in the future, I'm just driving the point home, if you folks had a little aerial view, it'd just be great for people to be able to come in and not do PowerPoints, but present something and.
Tough to do that in three minutes and that kind of detail really should be done more one-on-one.
Of course, and and I know where he's talking about because I used to play it there, yeah.
I remember the Pfeiffer.
Yeah, yeah. I chased cows up there back when I thought I was a cowboy.
Yeah. All right, well, we'll move on to our five public hearings.
Yes, so and Mr. Chair, Mary Rathke is going to connect the gentleman up with Mary Jo to see about getting an appointment scheduled, so. All right, so we have five public hearings this morning involving boundary change proposals. We have Mr. Chris Story from County Council and Ken Martin, our boundary change consultant, here to address you on all five of them. The first one and the first public hearing is to consider a board order for boundary change proposal CL seventeen dash zero zero nine for annexation to Sunrise Water Authority.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is you sitting in your role as the Boundary Commission, dealing with special districts, not as a governing body of any particular district. You are not the governing body of Sunrise Water Authority, so it's very clear here. Although we have five different properties being proposed, it's going to be very similar, but I think to make it clear to the public what's going on, we're going to still treat them as five separate public hearings, just just from a procedural standpoint. To introduce the property to you, Mr. Martin has traveled down here, so I think I will turn it over to him.
So this is Sunrise Water by itself, not, not the sewer district, just the water district. This is a four acre piece. It is slated for commercial development within the city of Happy Valley. There is an eight inch line in one hundred and sixty-second adjacent to the property and therefore services are available, we'd recommend approval.
Okay, that's it?
Just that easy.
All right. Any Commissioners have any clarifying questions? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Okay, how about I do this one? I move we approve the board order for boundary change proposal CL one seven dash zero zero nine, annexation to Sunrise Water Authority.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve a board order for border change proposal CL seventeen dash zero zero nine, annexation to the Sunrise Water District. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next item.
Okay, so the second item is to consider a board order for boundary change proposal CL seventeen dash zero one zero for annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One. And Mr. Story, go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. Again, this is the boundary change, you're not acting as the governing body of CCSD Number One, which you are, but to consider the proposal of annexation, this is a fairly small parcel. I will flag for members of the public in case they're curious about what goes into this decision, that the staff reports identify the criteria from both the state statute and Metro's code, chapter three point oh nine both apply. And there's been an evaluation, published notices to adjacent property owners, and then the order that would allow this annexation to go forward has been drafted for your consideration includes proposed findings regarding the level of service available. So we do make a sort of thorough examination about whether or not this would be well served by annexation into the district and that's one of the valuable roles that Mr. Martin plays.
So this one is point zero nine acres. It's actually part of a much larger twenty-four lot subdivision within the city of Happy Valley. For some reason, this tiny little piece did not get included and we want to put it in the district just to clean things up. The subdivision is in the city, has services available, so this is really just a cleanup.
Okay, great. Does any Commissioners have any clarifying questions? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move we approve board order for boundary change proposal CL seventeen dash zero one zero, annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve a board order for boundary change proposal CL seventeen dash zero one zero, annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next item.
Okay, this third hearing is to consider boundary change proposal CL seventeen dash zero one one for annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One.
My bit of color commentary this time around will be to flag the fact that while we're annexing these properties into CCSD Number One, three of these annexation proposals are CCSD Number One, I will highlight the fact that pursuant to the board's action in November of last year, CCSD Number One joined with a Tri-City Service District and this made the Service Water Management Agency of Clackamas County to form Water Environment Services, which is an ORS one ninety partnership as a separate municipal entity. And properties will be annexed into the underlying service districts, which will continue to exist, but the responsibility for delivering the service will become Wes's as the one ninety partnership's obligation to perform services on behalf of all three service districts. So I thought I would flag that's noted in the staff report. So you will continue to see annexations into the service districts, both Tri-City, SWIMAC and CCSD Number One, but that does not mean that Wes will not be providing those services. The Wes entity will be the provider of the services.
Okay, this, oh, go ahead.
This is a nine point eight acre piece, this is within the city of Happy Valley. The city of Happy Valley has already approved a fifty lot PUD on the property. And again, Wes has the services available and that's why we're annexing it into the district, as Chris just explained.
Okay, so this is Scouter's Mountain, right? And there is some controversy over Scouter's Mountain, I've heard. But we're not, it's already in the Happy Valley and they've already approved development.
Yes. So the the criteria that the board can't consider when deciding whether or not to annex it into the service district is whether or not this is the best means for service being provided to the property. So that, and that's the criteria that's laid out in the staff report. So there may be some other issues that pop up.
Obviously, the answer is yes.
And we may not be allowed statutory to consider those other factors, the the bounds of which you can't consider is defined by statute.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Okay, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move we approve board order for boundary change proposal CL seventeen dash zero one one, annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One.
Second.
Moved in second that we approve the board order for boundary change proposal CL seventeen dash zero one one, annexation to Clackamas Service District Number One. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next.
Okay, this fourth item is for boundary change proposal CL seventeen dash zero one two for annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One.
I will note for the purposes of this public hearing that this is the property that Mr. Pfeiffer was referring to in his public testimony. He indicated that he wanted to go early, so I think Mary has tried to accommodate his request and we we got him up in front of you a little bit earlier, but this is this property, and I will note, our proposal thirteen, seventeen dash zero one three, is the same property. It's being annexed into two different districts, so you have two different hearings, but it's the same parcel. This is for annexation to CCSD Number One, again, the services would be provided by Wes and that development is near Pfeiffer Park, as he indicated in his map.
So it's near Pfeiffer Park, it's not his property, though?
No, it's not his property.
This is a two point five acre piece and what's proposed here is a nine lot subdivision.
The unique quality here, the unique factor here is, most of these are usually within the city of Happy Valley, this is not within the city of Happy Valley. In fact, it was not contiguous to the city of Happy Valley, therefore, there there was no way they could annex it. And the nine lot subdivision was actually approved by the county planning department. We will probably see, you may see this eventually come into the city of Happy Valley, but for now, the development is going to be done under county rule.
So this is water or, oh, this is sewer.
Next one's water.
So this is proposal twelve, which is annexation to CCSD Number One, providing sewer.
So once it has sewer, they connect to pipes that go through Happy Valley?
They connect to CCSD One or Wes pipes.
Had our own by CCSD One.
Yes. Yes, so the city of Happy Valley does not own any sewer pipes. The service district, or Wes, as the service provider, owns all those assets.
Okay. Any further questions? I'll open the public hearing, ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move we approve the board order for boundary change proposal CL 17-012, annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One.
Second.
Moved in second that we approve a board order for boundary change proposal CL 17-012, annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. So, one second, I'm going to take a quick break.
Okay.
Very quick.
Try and smooth that one out.
Less painful way to do this.
Hey, we're back up, guys.
All right, we're ready, and the next item?
Okay, this fifth public hearing, and the final one, is for boundary change proposal CL 17-013 for annexation to Sunrise Water Authority.
Good morning, Commissioners. Our final hearing, we bookended it with Sunrise at either end and CCSD One in the middle. This is the same property that was discussed under proposal CL 17-012, but in this case, for 13, it's annexation to Sunrise Water Authority. Mr. Martin?
I have nothing to add to this one.
All right, any questions? We'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. We'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move we approve the board order for boundary change proposal CL 17-013, annexation to Sunrise Water Authority.
Is there a second? It's moved to second, it moved in second that we approve a board order for boundary change proposal CL 17-013, annexation to Sunrise Water Authority. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much, Ken. See you next time, these are always tough ones. And next item is the consent agenda.
Okay, the consent agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval to apply for a capital grant for the Federal Transit Administration Bus and Bus Infrastructure Investment Program funds through Oregon Department of Transportation for Mount Hood Express vehicle replacements, approval of an agency service contract with Cascadia Behavioral Health for residential treatment services, approval of an agency service contract with Northwest Housing Alternatives for supported housing services, approval of an agency service contract with Oregon Health and Science University to provide cultural-specific mental health services, approval of Amendment Number One of the Intergovernmental Subrecipient Agreement with Oregon Trail School District for preschool promised services, approval of a subrecipient agreement with Northwest Family Services for evidence-based parenting education classes, approval of a subrecipient agreement with Clackamas County Children's Commission Head Start for evidence-based parenting and education classes, approval of an intergovernmental revenue agreement with Oregon Health Authority for drug and alcohol prevention, education, and programming, approval of a subrecipient agreement with Toto Hutos for Prevent Net Community Schools, Molala Canby Rule, approval of a subrecipient agreement with Northwest Family Services for Prevent Net Community Schools, Urban Milwaukee, Gladstone, and Oregon City. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of a metro grant agreement number 934631 for the Clackamas County Active Transportation County Devices Project. Under elected officials' approval of previous business meeting minutes, under county council approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Multnomah County for the HIPAA compliance officer, under juvenile approval and acceptance of a grant agreement for the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission Specialty Court Grant Program, under our Technology Services, approval of service-level agreements between Clackamas Broadband Exchange and the city of Lake Oswego for dark fiber networks, and underwater environment services, approval of a resolution to establish the Water Environment Services Advisory Committee and adopt the bylaws, approval of Amendment Number One to the contract documents between Water Environment Services and CH2M Hill Engineering for Tri-City Water Resource Recovery Facilities Solids Handling Improvements Project, and approval of Amendment Number One to the contract document between Service District Number One and CH2M Hill Engineers for the Tri-City Water Resource Recovery Facilities Solids Handling Improvement Project. And that concludes today's consent agenda.
I was going to say that's a TC MF something. Anyway, does any Commissioner want to remove or pull an item from the consent agenda for discussion?
I'm tempted. But I'll pass.
Let's not do that.
Okay, so entertain a motion.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
It moved in second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. The next item is the county administrator update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually have a number of items to share with you, but one of the things I did want to mention that you just took action on, on the consent agenda, was approval of the final design schematic work for the solids handling project with the Tri-City plant. That's a major undertaking that Wes has been working on for the past couple of years. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Mr. Geist here for his work in steering the department and the effort forward. It's going to mean a significant, it'll have a significant meaning to the community in the future here, in terms of our capacity to be able to serve future growth and protect the environment and water quality here in Clackamas County. So I just wanted to make mention of that. I've got several items of good news about county operations to share with you. One is that we just received a financial assessment of the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. It was released by Standard and Poor's global ratings that show that the district has maintained its AA bond rating, meaning it has a very strong capacity to repay its long-term debt. And it, the report states that the district's finances are very strong. And I'd like to note that this assessment was made with full disclosure and awareness with the city of Happy Valley's intention to withdraw. So this consideration was done in consideration of the city's withdrawal and the conclusions looking forward to the, to the work of the district following the withdrawal of the city. So I wanted to make sure you were aware of that. I think that's good news for the financial health of the district, and I wanted to share that, so.
Of course, our preference would be that Happy Valley would remain within the district.
That certainly is true. Certainly is true.
I have a question on that. Did they have a pro forma to guide that decision, or that rating, or that confirmation? Standard or?
Say that again, Noah.
Did they have a pro forma of which they used for, for that determination?
I'm sure that they do, so the...
I'd like to have, I'd like to get a copy of it.
See what we can provide for you with that, yes.
And I can actually add some clarification, that they were provided with the assessed value revenue projections, that what the district typically receives from the zone that is the city of Happy Valley, and then matched that against projection of revenue without it. So it wasn't so much a business plan, you might say, which sometimes is what a pro forma is taken to mean, as a revenue projection.
Okay, good. Next, I wanted to relay to you that our Community Corrections Division is running a winter coat drive later this month, which will be for the benefit of our Transition Center. The center, which opened last year, is the first facility of its kind in the state of Oregon. It's an all-in-one location that provides services to people who are leaving our jail, and also to those who are at risk of returning. The winter coat drive runs from September 25th through the 29th, and drop-off sites for the public include the Transition Center, which is really just up the road here at Red Soils, also at our probation office in downtown Oregon City, and at the Brooks Building on Sunny Brook. And I just wanted to thank our Community Corrections staff for organizing this program. It's good effort. I have congratulations for our CCOM 911 staff, who were recently recognized here in the state of Oregon by the APCO NENA Group, dedicated to public safety communications. There are really too many staff members to mention here, more than 20 were honored for their hard work to help our residents during major incidents by making a positive impact to the 911 program and improving our training processes. One thing of particular note is that, you know, most of the time, the statewide training award is given to a specific individual, but this year, the entire CCOM training team was recognized for their dedicated teamwork and their strategic planning. So I wanted to congratulate those folks for their great work helping to keep our residents safe. Then our, we, our medical examiner's office is going to be given an honor. The Trauma Intervention Program of Portland-Vancouver is an organization of specially-trained volunteers who provide aid, support, and resources to victims of traumatic events and their families during the first few hours following a tragedy. And at the group's annual dinner this coming month, Eric Tonsvelt, who was with our county medical examiner's office, will be given a Good Samaritan Award, demonstrating that he went above and beyond the normal call of duty to offer support, compassion, and encouragement to those in crisis. And as you know, our medical examiner's office is part of our disaster management department. I just wanted to congratulate Eric for the great work effort that he has made. I have one other item for you, and this is following the Board's recess. I wanted to make sure, and this is part of my statutory responsibilities under the county code, to let you know what actions that the county administrator and the deputy county administrator took in your absence regarding grant applications and contracts. So I'll just quickly run through these for you. We took action on seven items on behalf of the Board, two for the Juvenile Department, which included approval of a grant award for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program, and approval of a grant award from the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission for Specialty Courts. We approved a matter for the district attorney's office. This was to allow the district attorney's office to apply for a grant, victims of Crime Act and Criminal Fine Account Program for, for victims of crimes here in Clackamas County. And for Business and Community Services, we took action to approve a public improvement contract with Equity Alliance LLC, also known as Remax Equity Group here in Clackamas County, for on-call Realtor services. For Water Environment Services via our procurement division, we took action to approve a public improvement contract between Clackamas County Service District Number One and Stellar J Corporation for access gates and supporting conduits. It's about a $200,000 contract that we took action on there. For Social Services, we took action to accept grant funds from the Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs to be used for staffing in the Clackamas County Veterans Service Office. This included an increase in staffing coming out of the legislature this year through the, through the state budget process, which will now allow us to add an additional veteran's service officer position to the office, and that's moving forward. And then the final matter involved facilities management via our procurement division, including, it was the approval of an amendment for our contract with Earthworks Landscape Services for Landscape Maintenance Services for Clackamas County. And that's what we did while you were gone.
Yeah, we should pull the landscaping one, though. Paul's, Paul's offered to mow the lawns. All right, well, thank you very much. Commissioner Communications and Commissioner Schrader?
Well, I had the opportunity on Sunday to participate in the 15th Annual Down the River Cleanup, and was on a raft from McIver Park with, down to Barton Park, and had the opportunity to do that with Commissioner Fisher, who is right currently now in DC. But it was a beautiful day, a wonderful experience, and I'm happy to report that this year, they're finding, because of their efforts, less and less pollution and garbage. We did, however, manage to hoist two big tires out of the river, so we're kind of proud about, quite about that. Big ones, big, big tires. It's unbelievable how, I even wonder why people would go all the energy to get them there to start with, but anyway. So we did that, and then on Monday, we had, with my colleagues who stopped by to say hello to the Association of Oregon Counties, we had our legislative and board meeting there. The association brings together all 36 counties in the state of Oregon to work of issues on mutual interests, and I'm moving up the ladder there. I'm soon-to-be-a-November-1st vice president, in the following year, I'll be president of that organization, and I'm looking forward to it. In the afternoon, we took our colleagues to actually the Legacy Project, and also to the limit while falls locks, and get a look at some of the economic development work. And finally, I think that Commissioner Bernard will say more, but we have a new representative for House District 38, Andrea Salinas, who went through the process yesterday. The hard part was, it was a really deep bench of really good talent, and it was a tough choice, but I think that everybody is where they need to be. And finally, I have arts and culture activities in the county. Here we go. Clackamas Repertory Theater presents Tigers Be Still. Watch how Sherri Wickman navigates a new job, her family's depression, her first art therapy client, and her sister's ex-fiancee's chihuahuas. Thursday through Saturday, September 14th through 16th, 7:30 PM, and Sunday, 2:30 PM at the Osterman Theater on the CCC campus. Philip Foster Farms Cider Squeeze, bring your apples, press Rs or buy cider. Vendors food craftsmen and musicians all day, fun for the whole family. Saturday, September 16th, due to 6:00 PM at Philip Foster Farm in Eagle Creek. And for more information, go to clackamasartsalliance.org.
Great. Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, I was at a transportation and housing-related conference on Monday at PSU, and was able to learn who is aware, the awareness really of causes of gentrification, displacement, things that, like, you know, in a nutshell, lead to poverty. And so we had, again, some people from Southern California and the Bay Area, as well as some local folks, and also a person from the Phoenix area, talking about their experiences, and a really good, the first session, a really good layout of painting the picture, giving the backdrop of all the things that lead to that. I'm hoping, in our housing discussion yesterday that we had, that that's part of our panel presentation in the near future, as we later this year get into a couple of different presentations, or a few different presentations, and encourage other people to participate in that. You know, while some of these things benefit government, and maybe, and obviously, some things of infrastructure is usually a good thing, but sometimes they increase the assessed value, sometimes that drives a lot of decisions, but the consequence of that may, may be a larger burden on Health and Human Services, or the social, the safety net, and at a greater expense than what was gained in a property tax increase. So I think that we have a lot of lessons to learn, and I really felt that the fact that the Bay Area and Berkeley and people that are studying this, they're really ahead of the curve, and they're really taking a lot of preventative measures in the Bay Area. It would really be nice to see Oregon step up their game and raise the bar like other areas are in, in controlling that, to make sure, for the benefit of their constituents, that they're, they're making their life better, not making their life worse. And I know there's no intention to do that, but there's certainly, if there's recognition that it's a consequence, then we have a responsibility to recognize that if you're cognizant of it, and you still continue to do it, that it's sometimes going to be perceived as, as, you know, a deliberate decision of some sort. I do want to say thanks to our staff for the hard work that we're making on our transition shelter. I don't know exactly when we'll be able to actually have that open here, whether I don't know exactly when we'll be able to actually have that open here, whether it's October or November, but our meeting yesterday went really well, and we're making some great progress on that, for that transition, thanks for, for veterans. So I'm hoping to get that, with weather right around the corner changing, I know we have a little bit of rain coming this weekend, but it's already a sign, there's also people making, homeless people that are making efforts to, how they're gonna cope with the weather. And, so that's something that's on our minds. So now for the dog. This is Fay. Her name means confidence, trust and belief. Fay trusts her instincts and believes that her new best friend will come to adopt her soon. In the meantime, Fay will snuggle with her stuffed toys in her bed and dream of her home, or her forever home. She would ideally be the only pet in the household, with loving adults who will rub her belly or her chin and cuddle in her arms. No thanks to children, they just aren't her thing. Her thing is getting all the attention lavished upon her. Think of her as your pretty chi-princess. Please go and visit Fay today. For more information about Fay and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services, five oh three six five five eight six two eight, or our website, www.clackamas.us/dogs.
So is that a Doberman Pinscher?
It looks like it, doesn't it? A very small version, though.
Chihuahua.
Chihuahua. Yeah, I have two dogs, and they all, they both want to be the center of attention all the time.
And I just lost a dog the other day.
Yes, you did.
So that was pretty hard, so.
Is that right? I didn't know that.
Yeah, my older one, but.
So, we had a couple of weeks off, at least sort of. We had various meetings to attend. Yesterday, thanks to the hard work of staff, and our film crew and everybody else, we, in partnership with Multnomah County, selected our House District Representative, Andrea Salinas. I think it was, it was challenging, but in the end, it was, I thought that she had a good grasp of the subject matter, had obviously done her work, and I think we made a great choice, you know, and to replace Ann Leiniger, who is now a judge. So I, you know, I, we, of course, received lots of emails, lots of phone calls, lots of visits, and we all had an opportunity to speak to the applicants, which there were four. And, you know, I think it's important that the applicants know that, don't give up. I mentioned that back in two thousand and three, Martha and I were up against the appointment to the county commission, and I lost, and Martha became a commissioner. And, you know, for me, it was, it was a very positive thing. I was able to do, finish my work and learn a lot, and now we're here, and we're both better for it. And I think the county's better for it. So, don't give up and keep working, and, you know, a couple of the, one of the applicants was really new to a city council, and I think that, in the end, she'll be very happy that she had more time on the city council, because we used to always say, that's where the boots hit the road. I'm beginning to think now that that's true, but it's also true at the county. Different boots. We have very different boots, but we, that, we are where the boots hit the road also. So that was a great process, and I, I want to mention that not only Mary, Kevin, who kind of was the emcee of the event, did a very good job, and it was, it was enjoyable, and we got it done on time, and.
I almost ruined that, though.
Yeah.
It's okay.
There we.
You gave me the.
Had to give her the red card. But, you know, I, it was great. And, of course, Lake Oswego, I would expect they would have better air conditioning, it was very hot, but it worked out well. Other than that, you know, the fires have had a huge effect on the metro area. And I think it's probably the first time, in my experience, that Multnomah County actually has become more aware of the issue. And I think statewide, our forest practices would be a bigger topic of discussion. We spend so much money on fighting fires that we don't do any maintenance anymore, and, and that's just not right. If we continue to do that, our fires will continue to burn, and we will have fewer forests to preserve. And eventually, I guess, we won't need a forestry department. So it's important that this issue be put on the front burner. I don't care what we do, we can prove our schools, we can prove our roads, we can prove transit, bike paths, all that stuff, but none of it's gonna be of any value if we can't breathe. So, it was pretty bad. I went to the beach, and I was shocked to see it was smoky in Manzanita. You couldn't even see the hillside. That's a long ways away. And, so, we gotta do a better job, and thankfully, I know that Clackamas Fire District participated in firefighting, and from all around the country, it was the number one fire. It might still be. It's not the biggest fire, but it's also one, in one of our most pristine areas in, in Oregon, one that also is, the fact that eighty-four shut down, I talked to somebody last night who was going to the Tri-Cities in Washington, and he had to go around Mount Hood to get there, and that's a long, a long trip. So, and the truckers are all doing that, and that's hard on our roads, hard, hard on our environment, and is a, it's important, but of course, the, you know, I would hope that people have the common sense not to throw fireworks in a fire, in a, in a very dry tinder, and, or have a fire. I mean, I, I have a burn that I'd love to do, but I also know that the ashes, an ash, all it takes is one, could burn down a lot more than I intended. So, be careful out there, and, God willing, rain will come on Sunday after the farmer's market's over, and we'll be in better position. So with that, we'll adjourn. Thank you very much.
Good meeting, guys.